Here. All right. Twenty-four July, the call this meeting to order. Still waiting on a couple of members, a little member, and Abby is zooming in. So, yeah, five thirty. Follow. Comments, so the first thing, right? Yeah, and we do not have any public comments that are more public here right now. And no public hearings. So the next thing is approval of the minutes of the previous board meetings, twenty-sixth of June. Anybody get a chance to go look at those?
Yeah.
They want to make the motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, um, the twenty-sixth.
That is. Second, and the next thing is. Oh. All, we're going to vote on it, favor?
I'm.
All eight days. Okay, you may like favor.
Yes.
Okay. Next, the discussion. Continue discussion regarding historic district. Uh, and we're going to review ordinance. On eleven, eleven oh one. Planning historic business workshop, tell me you said before the next meeting, right? Twenty-eight to August. At five thirty P M. I'll start then, I guess, Abby, I reviewed the Bernie Texas. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, all right, yeah, review the historic district of Bernie, and you review that also, right?
Yes.
And it's a wonderful document.
I agree.
Yeah, documents, uh, that I encourage everyone, encourage everyone to get a chance to look at, it's all online. It's all online, um, it gives great descriptions, it's probably a little bit. More than what we need. But it's a good framework. In that building, in that document, they describe our type of architecture, Abby, as. Main Street commercial.
Yes.
Main Street, Main Street commercial.
And.
It's all online, the city of Birmingham.
And, um, we had a workshop, I don't, can I, is this discussion, can we talk?
Yes.
Okay, so, can we talk? So, we had a workshop a few months ago, be- before a lot of us were together on this board, where we. We presented the, the Bernie Historic District and on PowerPoint. And so, and Gio, you have that, so what I would like to do is maybe next month, we go over that with, with the planning and zoning for our workshop. With the, for the Planning and Zoning Commission members that are new. And, and then maybe everybody can read it before. And, um. You know, then, yeah, so that, that's it, and so Matt, yes, I, I agree, I mean, it's fantastic, if we could use that as the basis. And, you know, and make revisions to the ordinance that was already approved, the two thousand eleven dash eleven dash oh one. If we could take that ordinance and then apply some of the, the, you know, the Bernie aspects to it.
Yeah, they're just larger than what we're looking at for us, and has, I mean, a larger variety of buildings.
Right.
So, but it was, it was very interesting to raise.
And did you say, I'm, I'm sorry, you made a sense, so I don't know, I missed it, we can get those from Gio before the next meeting, the opening teams, when we perform review, and have questions for there?
I'm so sorry, I'm having, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Okay, um, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just a little muddled, I'm not sure, I think, I think there's maybe some interference with microphone or something from, like, air conditioner or something.
One second.
Yeah, it's working out.
Yes, it will be, and, and I can send it to everybody after the meeting, it's just the PowerPoint. It did before, is that?
That's correct.
Can you hear a little better?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and send it out to everybody after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, would this be a good time, Gio, for me, sorry to everybody, but I will not be able to meet for this. And I don't know for sure if I'm going to be able to zoom in, I'll be in Austin, it's mandatory. I'd rather be doing this, but, yeah, like going to Austin, I'm so disappointed, but. But at least I'll be able to see the home, yeah.
Hey, do we need anything more on that, A? Any comment?
No, we'll go ahead and just schedule a workshop, and that will include, you know, I'll send out the presentation from the previous meeting. You, all of you all, and then the workshop would be just to discuss, I guess, enhancing our current ordinance or changing it. Uh, and we would invite the, the business owners, would we, or would you prefer that we do?
I, yeah, I think absolutely, and I also think that if, if we invite the business owners and this. This next meeting is a workshop, but also a time where we can begin to rewrite the ordinance or present a new ordinance. And that way, if they have feedback, that would be a perfect opportunity. I mean, what are your thoughts?
I think that's fine, um, we can definitely send a letter out to them, or unless you prefer to deliver them again, I'm not sure what, what you'd prefer about.
I think a letter is fine.
Okay. And I noticed Bernie did not rewrite theirs, they just upgraded theirs, but we can probably do the same thing, since we already have one that's written.
Right.
We don't have to rewrite the whole thing, necessarily.
I agree.
Definitely, okay. Okay, uh, next is B, discuss the current sign ordinance, dark skies ordinance, uh, for updates and amendments, and of course, it's included in the package, everybody get a chance to go look at that.
Yes.
I'm going to hit it, but I'll stay.
A lot of definition, a lot of. What, what things mean.
This is open for discussion afterwards.
Yes, and I, you, you put it on the agenda, so definitely, you start with you, trying to make sure, yeah.
So, yes, there's a lot to digest here, so what I did was, I, I started with, thanks to Gio for helping me find all of this.
Thank you.
Yes, very helpful. I started with just reading through the signs, and, and what dumped out to me on the very front of, which is one of my photos, I'm pointing out for you guys, is. It, it just says abandoned sign means a sign which no longer identifies or identifies, by business, we've got a lot of holes around it that don't do that anymore. And so, we don't want to, I want to look at a way to make it where it's, um. Something, I really feel like the holes are there, because it's just not cost effective to have them taped there, but I think I may have found a, a way around that, if we can. But, more than anything, when I started doing my research, was if you go to, um, and I highlighted a few things on here, which is in the abbreviations, low profile sign or monument sign. Uh, this is a note, needs a sign mounted directly to the ground with maximal height cannot exceed six feet, and I like that idea. And really think, maybe that might be a way to look forward to going into the, of course, and then behind that, you have maintenance, what's the definition of that, which basically sort of points out what we're dealing with already. Um, and then there's a monument sign, and read that, non-conforming sign, I highlighted that, which, you know, is an illegal sign, doesn't comply with sign ordinance for two of the requirements, but I've seen. Oh, you know, not a lot, but if you have them around, that's something that makes sense to me. Um, and then I went full cover, which means, and this is it, I'm still in the abbreviations here, or, I guess.
The abbreviations. Sure.
Definitely, same, like, definitely, word with. Um, full cover, of course, is one that makes sense to me, and I know there's a couple of those out there, and then you have the sign. Means any device fixture placed carved or structured that uses color forms or graphic, and this was a big red flag right here, because when you start looking at the dark skies, they have some sign definitions in there. I don't think anybody's. Put them two together, yeah, and that's going to be a big one, so we'll move into that whenever we get to that part, so then, I just wanted to go over those definitions, so then, I guess for me, the biggest thing. I'm trying to highlight the ones that I thought were more, there could be more, I may have missed some, so if you guys see some, we're going to say, hey, yes, this, because I know there's a lot here. And number one, section seventy-eight dash two permits, number one, A, all signs having a greater area than six square feet, okay, six square feet, what, what is, you know, what is six square feet to you?
Two by three, this would be the purple panel.
Okay, how many, how many, like, feet would you consider six square feet to represent? Literally.
Three foot by two foot.
Okay, all right, let's keep that, because that's what went through my head, and I wanted to make sure I got somebody else's official on it. If you come down, and I'll go, I'll get back to it in a minute, I'm just going down my list, if you go down to number four permit exceptions in section B. General maintenance, any sign should not require permit, okay, so, um, that to me was just a, if you got to fix the sign, you don't have to go get a permit, I just want to make sure that's on that. And then on seventy-eight dash three, number four, this one, um. Temporary sign for eighty-three and over seven days, um, and maybe renewed, uh, eight times a year, I know one in town, I think they're making another one, and I'm just having it seen now, you know, seeing it. Um, any sign, and then number eleven, showing that starts at the top, on the back of that. And I'm going to profess to them, any sign or part thereof, that are part here wholly illuminated by floodlights or spotlights, this is a big deal, you can read that whole paragraph. Jingle look at the new outdoor lighting ordinance. Because it's conflicting, the two are absolutely conflicting, we will go over that, and. Any sign that is obvious for repair that goes back to code enforcement and all this stuff, that I have a, sort of a, a plan, I promise. For. Um, and then on the back with this, which is, this is going to be. Where did I go? Still in that same section of seventy-eight dash three, but I'm all the way down to under section E. Which is R one, R two, R four, zone residential areas, and then you go to number four in that section, that's another one that is conflicting with the, um, new outdoor lighting. Ordinance, and so, and. Like, within forty feet of residential zones, such as children, and sorts of lighting, and things like that, but I'm, you know, I'm like. If it's grandfather, I don't think you want to really worry about it, but I do think going forward, we shouldn't have two separate standards that is confusing with the other, if that makes sense, all that work, I'm going to. Okay, and then if you go down below that, number F, um, non-residential regulations, this is, to me, is would be a change going forward, um. As in the forty feet of a residential zone, um. But, that's the real thing, if we're gonna, my recommendation is that we look forward to going to monument style sign. That way you avoid all of this that we're having to deal with right now, and now to deal with the, the ugliness that we're going to have to work with. Okay, monument stop list, a, a good, um, to me, example would be Soul Ross's new signs that they have at their entrances, that's like a, a six foot on the ground. No higher than, I think, in here, it shows somewhere a, a height of a freestanding sign shall not exceed thirty feet above gray, but. Replace this in exempt billboards, I'm not talking about billboards, um, with six by A monument, low profile, you know, once you get it. Going forward, then, you wouldn't have Family Dollar or Pizza Hut with those interface signs, and then if you come into town, they would be low, so when the lights, you know, we're, we're trying to do the dark skies, you don't want to have a bunch of. Light signs, and when you start really looking at what's going on with that, the new outdoor lighting. It's going to, a lot of those, like, you can't have a white that brown, you can't have anything like that.
Yeah, well, there's kind of the.
There's certain.
Down, I love.
But they're even just restricting the colors that you can put in the sign, and if you're going to use certain colors, you have to use beets. And so, my thinking is, if, if you, if you go down to what I call, I'm just calling it a monument stop sign, you don't just don't have to worry as much about that, if it going forward, if that makes sense. And then it keeps the skies open for the beautiful mountains, and the stars, and everything else. I'm thinking, I kind of like the welcome to our monument signs, it's kind of like a monument. It's a monument sign, yeah, if it was on the ground, and, you know, we just need to decide, you want it to six feet, eight feet high, going forward, you know, if new businesses come to town. They can't do the tall, they can base signs anymore, they need to keep them down low. You know, and it's.
Down, down facing, shielded wall, all, all.
Yeah, to, to, to comply with both of the ordinance, so that you can be able to even mesh the two, so that they could find both, but, because if you look in here, um, is it forty feet above gray? Uh, and then right below that, remember we asked you what, what do you call six feet? Look underneath that, says side, side of the freestanding, projecting sign shall not exceed a hundred square feet. Below.
Yeah, the six feet was in, regardless, it just, it was a big one.
If it's higher than that.
No, if, if, if the sign is going to be greater than six square feet, it needs permit, if it's less, it's a two by two design, then it needs permit, that's what that.
So I'm just. But still, right here, I want to call your attention to the hundred square feet, because then, if you go back over to the new outdoor lighting, and I'll point it out to you, then I highlighted, it shows two hundred square feet. And to me, that's kind of, wow, that's dark skies, why would you put two hundred square feet on a, big old sign up there lit up, even though you're going to use, you know, maybe different colors, just bring it down, and you don't have to worry about. And so, that, I, I pointed out, um, it's for a size, size of a freestanding, you're projecting signs, shall not exceed a hundred square feet, that's, I think, we need to go a hundred, or we need to go two hundred, you can't have zero to one, hundred over. And so. Uh, number three below that, under number, I just, you know, wrote in there on one of those, that'd be, you know, instead of one freestanding sign shall be permitted for a hundred feet of street brush, one monument sign for a hundred feet of brush. You know, and you just need to make sure, um, I think down, um, the location of four upon B, if I got it in the right spot, to me, that meant. Um, you just need to add something into it, make sure that it has X number of street clearance, we're public right away to see, you can't put it right on the street where people can't see through it, and then kind of like what. So Ross, then you set it back off the road a little bit, and make sure that there's a side, there's a sidewalk, you know, and then the stop signs up here, the people would be able to see through it. Because I, I actually turned left with some of the sandwich signs up there, bookstore, I've never, I've still turned up at that, and, and I, I got it. It's, um, okay, so if you flip over to that. Number, um, article eight of outdoor lighting, again, number five, that's another one that's in, um. I guess, conflict with the lighting, um, and the luminance of residential zones, so that probably needs to be upgraded. Um, the whole five, and then all the way down to six on that. Code enforcement to me is pretty straightforward, but, um, I would say down on compliance, we might want to say, if you find any sign is unsightly or unsafe. Does that make sense? Because there's some that maybe say that they're pretty ugly, when we're halfway there. And then, um, okay, on the very last page, just, you look at the very top line. See, but it's, it's in the compliance, it's in, commit, if the owner fills, remove all of the signs, so as to comply with this chapter within ten days. If you look at the outdoor lighting, it actually gives them sixty days, so you, you get, you get, I guess, the notice that you're out of compliance, then you get thirty days to respond to it. And then you get thirty days after you respond to it, it's approved, to get it done, so to me, that just needs to go from ten to sixty, the rank to John. Now, what I propose, because, look, this is the reason, most of it's the stuff that's out there, is because it's not cost effective for the business owners, or whoever owns the property, to take it down. So, I reached out to, uh, I, I, I remember someone I worked with on another, like, personal project in the past, I rang that, and I called him, and I said, so. How does junk metal? What does it mean to you, and he goes, money? And I'm like, okay, so what if I said, you know, we have some old signs that we want to have taken down around town? Because, I said, would you take them down for the metal, and he goes, yeah. And I said, okay, so, uh, what would you need, you've had everything you need, because I pointed, I told him, you know, some of them, we had the pictures up and everything. And, um, he said, I have a welder, I have a truck, I have a trailer, um, I'd probably need, uh, to borrow a lift from somewhere. I'm like, okay, I'm pretty sure the city has a lift. Do we?
Um, I think we do, I believe so, I'd have to check with them.
I'm like, you know, just find out, let me know, but that was his main concern, and so then I said to him. Would you be willing, because some of those holes are pretty kind of scary, like, to take down, you know, even if you're going to weld them off, cut them down, take them down a little bit at a time. And he said he would be willing to, you know, work around and do it like in the, like, evening after hours, you know, when there's not traffic, like overnight kind of thing, and so. That to me sounded workable, so my thought was, if we go to these business owners and we say, hey, kind of like they do with citations, I think I've heard once a year on the radio, that they'll give them a pass or something like that.
Amnesty.
Yeah, amnesty, just go to the business owners and say, we have. This going on, we're trying to make this happen, you know, in a certain period of time, whatever, decide, would you allow someone to come on this property and take down just the poles? The whole one. And, um, I know there's going to be some others, like, I know out toward, um, what's the convenience store on the outskirts of town, if you don't know.
E V? The one?
No, that was there, I was.
Triangle.
Triangle?
No, some triangle. Is it going out? The, uh, going out.
Truck stop.
You know, the little one going out toward, um, Mark, Mark, oh, Mark, not Mark, apparently. The Amco or Anthony one. Casey.
Casey.
But he's got, you know, and he, it's not, and he's just got that frame thing, but there's, looks like there's wires and stuff in there, you know, and so I asked him if he would be willing to work with that. We said, yeah, he would, but we have to get the owners to, you know, give their okay to go in and take them all down.
Right.
And then give him the time to go through. And, you know, I'd say let's do the little signs first and we'll start taking down all of the, the big ones after that. And I mean, as we being all of, you know, around town, we've seen, we've seen that list and getting, you know, the pride of one, pride more in time. If it's just to take it down for the metal, so, right? And, and to me, that's a workable situation. It's not like we're, you know, we're being hated because people want us, want us to spend money to take signs down. We don't, we're just let's take them down. That's all we wanted. So let's take it down.
Right.
So that's my thought on that. Um, if you look at the outdoor lighting, which I had, like I said, um, had added to it. Then we go to the very, I'm gonna start from the very last page. There's probably more on our lighting in there, but if you go to, uh, it's the, it's the one, two. Fourth one. Starts off with temporary lighting. Drop down to see the amendment and, you know, like we said, this article may be amended from time to time as well. It's changed and things are per recommendation for the stuff that we need. And so I, the wondering why I wanted this, I wanted to use it kind of as a template. Make the changes that we need on that, that we can, you know, cross the two together. I don't know the differences until I start reading. Um, if you flip over to number six on the next page, under any first violation of this article, um, there's the sixty days I was talking about earlier, that I think we need to put the two together, the ten day on signing ordinance, give them sixty days between the two, so that gives them time to respond. I mean, we can do it faster, as long as they say, okay, but if it's someone that a sign is bad and needs to be written or repaired, give them the sixty days to do it. If it's a new sign went up, it needs to be monitored. And if it's, um, if something needs to be taken down, it's just put it out there. But to me, that, did I miss something there? I'm trying to cover all of it.
I think that's great. I think those recommendations are great. And I would also recommend adding some, um, specific, how do you say, specific circumstances where the people could be cited for it. So being a lot more specific than just being unsightly or whatever it says now outside ordinance. And saying, you know, obvious disrepair. I don't know what else would you want.
They pretty much called for that in the sign ordinance. I just wanted to add unsightly because it didn't even happen. There's one of them that I see. I mean, it's, it's spelled out. I just read it out.
Well, when looking, when looking, um, at site ordinance not too long ago, I thought it was pretty, um, vague, to be honest, because there wasn't and then, then we, um, could use in code enforcement to write a citation. It was just open for interpretation.
What is unsightly means?
Which, what's the definition?
Unsightly, yeah. You, you could get more specific than that.
Very much.
Yeah.
So I like all of your recommendations, but I would also recommend, um, putting more specific, um, just like for the, for the other stuff, yeah, get, uh, defined slightly. I'm saying.
And I'm also going back thinking about, you know, very good that you in regards to removal of scissors left or whatnot. I was just thinking of the legality of that as well.
And I have something to add if, if I can.
Okay, wait a minute.
You know, just trying to avoid, uh, to keep me there, but with the benefit, how can we actually enforce this? Your grandfather, well, unsightly or, yeah, the business owners want to take it down, that's great.
Oh, it, it, it says, excuse me, but it's something here that the, the business owners can be given a citation and they have to have, you know, the ten day, what it said originally, that you can cite, incite them, which we have been doing obviously. Um, that happened. For me, I don't wanna, I wanted to give them an out, you know, to start with. And as far as the legality that it goes, I guess that would be the part where we would go to them and say, are you gonna allow us to take this down, you know, at our expense? So sign off on this and, you know, the no harm, done.
It, it shows that your sunshine may be removed by the city and the permit fee or owner shall bear the expense.
Exactly. They shall bear the expense. That's what we're trying to weigh right now. Just to keep it fair and nice. Does that make sense?
It's just kind of that thing.
Abby, go tell them.
What you got?
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry y'all, I can't see body language, so I don't mean to like talk over or anything, but sorry, I didn't see you were in the middle of talking. I thought, I thought, anyway, okay. I did look, read, I read a lot of sign ordinances over the last month. And so Wendy, I, I can't remember who all is on our committee to update the, the ordinances. I know Wendy is. And so what, if, if we rewrite or update this ordinance, cause, cause Geo and Drew, I agree that it's, that it's up for, there's too much up for interpretation and it needs to be clearer. Um, but if we could maybe, uh, meet in the next few weeks, you know, to where we're not a quorum, however, whatever number that is, to start rewriting this. But I did notice that a lot of other, um, sign ordinances in other cities, they started out with a purpose and an intent before the definition. So, you know, the intent or the purpose of the sign ordinance is to enhance the economic value of the landscape. This is just an example. By avoiding visual cluster, this may address some of the aesthetic stuff, which is potentially harmful to property values and business opportunities. So there's some language there if we set a, a, um, a purpose that, um, you know, we can then reference when it comes to the unsightly, like what is unsightly? Because that's up to, you know, that's subjective.
I think what I was saying, just things I saw that were in conflict, but I totally agree with that. What I was gonna say was the article, that's why I wanted to use the outdoor lighting, and that's how they go top. So that's how they lead into it as a template. And you can almost take a lot of it, not all of it, but a lot of it verbatim and apply it over here. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Go to the, I totally agree with that. And this was the one, it was the, I used to be going to.
That way it starts off positive.
That's what, that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And then abandon, we can add abandoned signs. You know, because that's a, you know, yeah, because we have like a slightly like a sign. Did y'all say that? I'm sorry.
No, 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 we were laughing.
So anyway, but I think it's great work. And if, I don't know whoever would like to, um, to meet, you know, over the next month, we can redline the current ordinance and maybe have something to present fairly soon.
No, I.
Sounds great.
Yes, thank you. They move so slowly in government. Well, I mean, you do have to meet on the twenty eighth. Doesn't have to only be within historic district and you throw some of this in there with it.
Yeah, it can be a workshop.
Buy all those, make the list, check the files and buy all those property owners.
They end your stocks and all the deadlines.
Yeah. No, we're gonna all cover it. But anyway, also on the outdoor lighting, let me just finish that one real quick. If you look on page sixteen, um, it's basically the page opposite of this one, it's the, uh, it starts off edges of the signs with a little bit there. But that's where it talks about the colors and the background and letters and, and certain. And so that needs to be literally from, taking from lighting over into the signing. You see, I mean, I see that, but they need to have the same language. That's why I said, oh, this is a template. Kind of overriding, if you wanna read it there. That that whole page is, um, talks a lot about things that need to be.
And I think it'd be better to update the sign ordinance, cause we just passed the OLO, you know.
Right. You don't wanna change this. You're gonna have to use this to go there. That's what. And that's all from me. I think I've said enough. Thank you.
A good, a good project to do is, uh, read them for the line to the phone and match your marker. And then talk about it again at the next meeting.
Where's that sign?
And then about planning. We can also, we can see what other cities are doing. Like we did with Bernie, what we're doing with Bernie and, um, maybe for other towns.
So if you do wanna go over on that, like you're talking, what I call a spread with your signs. Well, you would love the idea. You want to check with some of the wind, wind side, anything along the coast, look, start with it for their ones. Cause a lot of them will have strictly.
I know Austin's pretty much gone that way. And if you pull like Littleton Hill and some of the others, we don't see the ugly sky signs anymore. They're low, they're all down. So I really feel like we, more than anything, because we're trying to, you know, bring up the, the stars and the dark skies and, and it just goes hand in hand with the whole thing. So now is as good a time as any of, you know, start.
Well, Abby. So.
Just tie it together with our thought, you know, and use that as our sort of lead in as to why we wanna go.
It's like our biggest issue is gonna be trapping sidewalks and your turn. You know, it's my same voice, for instance, will come down and, you know, having to look over their sign. So we'll, we'll have to get that specific.
Exactly. And, and that should be tied into the permit, so that if you go out there and say, this is the times we go, you know, everything's pulled out.
Yeah. So for us to enforce that, then that's why the changes are needed for, you know, think about grandfathering in, you'd have to think about all that. You know, when you come along with this. You know, if there's gonna be anything, gonna be that avoid. And everybody has to compile, or is this gonna be a grandfather thing, whoever has it up right now, or is it gonna be a?
Um, my thing is, right now, if they gotta sign up and it's in good shape, let it stay, you know? But we need to take care of all the other ones.
Or if you have to replace it, you have.
If you have to replace it, then you need to go to what the new code is. Um, and for anybody else coming in as a business, they have to go with the new code. But I don't, you know, I, it's, it's very expensive, it's, you know, to go out and start changing signs all over town.
Especially to replace the pole.
Yeah, exactly. But if we can get the poles down, get rid of all the unsightlyness, and then move forward with the new lighting signs, anybody else coming through, then to me, that's the way to go.
But in your, is it Casey? Casey's?
I think Casey's.
EB's Casey.
Yeah, I think that one just sold. Well, so I think it's something.
Oh, now would be a good time. They go over there and talk to them. And if they're gonna have to replace the sign, we gotta make it out.
Well, I like this sign the way it is, thanks to the sign, that they wanna keep the pole.
They can change its ownership. I think maybe we should put that in there, change ownerships. It's an unsightly sign. The sign's good. Like Pizza Hut, right? I just go back to that one. It, the wind broke it and they fixed it. You know, I noticed it within one of our packages, but they fixed it. But if Casey sells and he's not gonna call it Casey's anymore, then he's gotta go with a new sign in place if they can go with it.
Well, I know, and he owns also the, the other ones that were in pictures.
Oh, but then that owns them. So then he ought to be happy if we're gonna pass, you know, giving them a pass on the cost to go through and take all the ugly ones down. Cause he's not gonna have to deal with it. And it helps the city as a whole. So you're not driving.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just covering bases.
No, I, I.
You know, you got it and things, so that's gonna be cost prohibitive for him to own a business. Well, I can't find this because the city wants us to take this down, uh, to put a new thirty thousand dollar monument sign up. You know, we have, you have to look at all of it. So I just, cause we're gonna hear from the front line, we'll be, this is only an.
I just think.
You know, which, which I'm fine with. You know, I'm just questioning, and again, it's just me speaking out about any ownership change that has been forced compliance.
If they're gonna change the sign, if they're not gonna change the sign, if Casey's was up to compliance, I would say, because it's just in compliance anyway, right? But let's say it's Valero, okay? And somebody wants to buy the Valero and change it to a,
Just wrong technical, the re.
Yeah, wrong Texas, that's what went by mine. They're gonna change sign anyway. You see what I mean? And so then they need to go through the new monument sign.
If they can't just change.
No, if it changes names, I think they need to pull, because that's how we ended up with all the, the poles to begin with.
Um, I'm just. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a fine line.
You guys could put it down somewhere. Really are, or you're still gonna be backtracking all the time. That's my thing. But we're not telling the whole, the business owners that they have to change their sign, unless if it's in compliance. We're just saying if you change ownership or if design, you know, breaks or something like that, or what's working, then you need to go to the monument sign.
And that'll go back to the definition of replacement or repair. I mean, we can.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, in like with Pizza Hut, they had it up here and broke. So then Pizza Hut repaired it, back to where it was, with that grandfather, because that went back to there. Still the same ownership. But if, say, Valero's breaks, sign breaks, um, and they say Valero, then they're just gonna fix it back to the way they had it. But if they sell it to Texaco, then Texaco's gonna have to go with the new ordinance. Because they're changing the sign completely and the name. Maybe that just makes sense. If you change ownership.
Yeah, I'm just throwing out ideas. I mean, just, I'm just thinking if I'm, that'd be.
You got a new business coming into town, they're not gonna know any difference, because of the ordinance, that's what you gotta do.
That'll have, definitely have to be stated. I'd be a little apprehensive. I mean, just me, I'm just thinking it's business, I mean, water, playing devil's advocate.
I've been a business owner. I've hated one of those signs before. I know exactly what you're talking about.
So it takes a. If Valero has a forty foot pole sign, it takes a couple of rebrands, you get to cut it off, put it on, you can sign it if you want. And nothing else changes structurally, safety wise.
Well, they can just take the poles and bring the sign down. Take the poles out, bring the sign down. So I wanna see the usual. You have three mountains around here. How, how are they gonna know if there's new owner? How do you know if there's a sign? Well, the first thing, if they're, if they're just changing one, okay, say the poles stay up, they're just gonna change the top. Do they have to get permitted to do that? Yeah, they're.
Yeah, over six square feet. Yeah, like if you, yeah.
So this is what we're talking about, over, over six feet, they'll have to come in and apply for a permit to get that. Even if there was a sign already there before. If they're changing the signs, they're leaving it the same name, no, they wouldn't have to do anything. But if they're changing the name of it and the whole sign's gonna change, then they need to come into compliance.
Gonna be a permit for that, isn't it?
Yeah, you have to get a permit to change that. Kind of like the, the Casey guy, if there's a new owner who just wants to change the name, I don't, I can't think of what that sign looks like. It's just a Casey, the big white Casey's. And to be honest, they're out of compliance with the outdoor lighting too.
Yeah, they don't have to come in compliant, like we obviously. So they do, you're typically in compliance right now, out of compliance.
They say Casey's, then, you know, we just need, I'm just, I just want the ugly frame underneath, it's not doing anything. The frame, the, looks like it had some wiring, it must've had, like you said, at some point in time, which it says in here, you got wiring that's not going anywhere, and they swam off anyway. And so if somebody buys Casey's and they leave the sign, they leave the Casey's, then sign is there now, it's fine, other than just take down the part that needs to be done already. Now, if they change the name for Casey to J C or whatever, then they bring it down. And to me, that means getting and just taking the poles out. And, you know, if this guy, he's from the area, now he's around, in his name, so there's guys that live for it.
Should be all part of the permit.
Yeah.
They all part of the permit.
And he, if, you know, a lot of things go, well, I can keep you pretty open to just go in and take it down for the owner to make it, you know, that they may have paper lift themselves. But as long as he's getting, keep the metal, that's a win-win. I mean.
No, it, it sounds good.
Here's what I think we do, uh, I'm gonna work, and then you get an extra next month. Draft up a tentative statement to that effect. And we'll look, we'll look at that statement.
I just didn't know how far I could go with talking to others about it outside of the mean, you know what I mean? So I just started reading what I find, and then I, this to me is what I would say, do you have any for discussion? Cause I got a lot of questions here myself.
Yeah, well, all, all this is.
Yeah, don't worry.
Well, we get prepared and just one part of reading through something.
Yeah.
So to me, you've got some, you've had some great questions, and things I thought of, that I'm kind of like, what happened with the historical district up there. When I was reading through that, it was like there was so much kind of minutia that people weren't even following the ordinance. It's not being enforced. So why have something if you're not gonna enforce it? So if you say that and the business changed the answer, then we're gonna change the sign, or they have to come in and file for an apartment anyway, then you look at it, go find out if it's gonna be, you know, a different name than before.
With, I'm just throwing it out, yeah, all Casey's or mine, I'm sorry, I won't push it.
We're not beating that, it's just a basic example.
Yeah, just a good example, I, I'm telling you what, you're gonna have to come down, or say you rebrand it's just a store. Why can't you just leave that sign up there?
But then it doesn't point to a business in town that we have, it's just a huge sign. It has, if you read the sign ordinance, it says that you can't have a sign out there that doesn't tie to a specific business. You can't. It's in the ordinance itself only.
You did, um.
Oh, you're good.
Just, you know, what if it's gonna come, I'm not gonna do it, then are we gonna make that? Cause they do whenever a new business comes in.
Five fifty dollars a day, but they're not, that's what it says in the.
They come back and read your certificate of occupants.
And then you, you know, can have the sign taken down and then cause it's in the ordinance already.
Those are your recommendations, but you and the front row with references have been, uh, something affected before? Like finding, you could not remove the signs or, yeah, you know, they just ignore it and wouldn't enforce that, so because you are right there. We can tell whatever we want to, but you're facing the owner, they're really, would follow the rules, so we'll really pay the fine.
Yeah, well, we do follow, we do have a couple, and now the most that they've seen at the previous meeting, we haven't actually gone out and seen them like Jessica and Adam, I mean, perfectly example pizza, we sent them a letter, you're, it's in disrepair, and that's the same thing as COVID, we're giving them fifteen days compliance. We hopefully can work with them. If not, then we send them a second letter, then it goes to citation, then they go to court. So we do have avenues to pursue on that. But, you know, be perfectly, we're, as busy as we've been, and that kind of been on the.
Yeah.
Not that product per se, I see it as, we see it, write it down, do what we can do, but we don't have the manpower or any kind of just that. We're doing.
And we're one, one who doesn't be mad about it and we'll just. Well, and that's why I said, if we can get the signs down without costing them anything right now, because that's one reason why it's such there. Is that it's too cost prohibitive to have it taken down. If you can find someone that will take them down and not it then costs them property owner anything, then why not? And then everybody's happy. It's not like you, you know, you don't wanna go around making everybody mad. And that what you wanna do is make it a, a workable and as portable as possible for them to get into compliance. And, and, and to be honest, the aesthetics of the town, I mean, that was the reason why the sign came up to begin with. Was when you walk, when you drive into the first part of town, all you see is ugly poles. And you, we want those to go away. And then, cause you're gonna take the poles down and, okay, going forward, then let's not have to worry about the poles. Let's just go to monument signs. And then you can see all the mountains and all the stars, and you stay within the compliance and everything. So I think, basically, we're just trying to help that lighting along by getting signs there as well. And everybody loves the dark skies, I think. I haven't heard anybody complain about that whatsoever. That's what I, I approach it.
The little poles coming in there forever, they're barely enforceable removal. So how come they weren't removing for?
Well, because now we have a new ordinance that has to do with outdoor lighting.
Yeah, when, when we work on our suggested ordinance, the wording for it, remember, it should be enforced.
Right. And if you read like this first page of the outdoor lighting, I love the way they put that in there. There's a lot of it we used in which they use, you know, certain wording, and they spoke with the, the property owners. And they, they approached it from a positive standpoint, which is, you know, I picked out a list of all the stuff that I found, or to try to be negative, looking at the things I found, but I would approach it from a positive standpoint. We wanna tie it in to the dark skies and start going there. You don't have to tell them, ready, take your signs down now, but the ones that are open, let's fix them. And if you're coming in as a new guy, I don't care if you're doing business and you bought it, or you're building and then build it. This is Florida.
No, it sounds great. I mean, just make sure we.
Oh, we gotta get it all in there. And I want you in there, so we get it all in there to make it enforceable for you.
You have.
That's the whole idea.
Enforceable is my biggest issue, maybe that and affordability for the business. That, that's gonna be our key here. I mean, I'll be, I'll move down here for the dark side. But that's gonna be.
We thought it's for the job. Dollar generals and all that stuff, they're gonna, just first thing they're gonna do, well, since they've had their other force here, they're gonna think they can just go with the other signs, right? But they have to come in and apply for a permit. So it's at that time that we gotta know that the.
New construction remodels, I'm not, that's a piece of cake, it's just these mom and pop owners and just great buying, saved up all my money about it's convenience store and it's all, tell me I have to.
They're gonna probably, they're gonna have to spend thirty thousand on a sign anyway, so let's just fix it for. I mean, if they, if they're looking at it, just like I did, when I did mine, and I knew I had to, I, looking at the price of what that sign was at the strip center, and what they, I had had the individual illuminated letters, exactly the way they wanted it. You know, and so it was built into my cost. But that's what they, that's what they said.
I'm true value, pack up, I'm solved all.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, in order, that'll be something for the next. Anyway, yeah, that'll be something for the next meeting, and we'll discover the wording. That's a really wonderful word put in there.
For Jeff.
Oh, thank you, I'm not sure it's good job, but I appreciate the support.
Ordinance review. Gio, did you have anything that was specifically?
So, I just added this to facilitate a discussion on the objectives and where we're at, and if y'all have a plan for the rest of them. Just to kinda get the conversation going.
I do wanna talk about the zoning map.
Yeah, that one has been completed for the most part.
Okay.
So, you know, y'all, David Yaltz Bar and Walter, or Matt, sorry, I will do it, but. She got me all of the ordinance numbers, so we, we collected them, we have them in the pot. And city manager's working with the Rio Grande Council of Governments.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna bring up.
To try and get the map up.
Do you hire a GIS person, or what?
Well, we're hoping that their GIS person who's located here will help us.
Okay.
Charge. Um, but, you know, we're in the conversation right now, so we'll see how it.
As you get to do it chronologically, that person will know, whether you have to. But, but I think there's probably some places that change two or three times. You can't go from more recent to the older, go to the older and more recent. And the final changes will be in there, one of the things that brought that up, that I'm thinking about that, I, I have a. We're right across the street from my house, there's a guy named Ned, is building a junkyard. But it's not zoned for that, it's zoned for mobile homes. He put a junkyard in right there on Fourteenth Street, and it's not fenced. You're at least fencing his porch area.
Um, you know, anybody.
We can't go talk to him until we know what the current zoning.
Well, you know, the zoning map is reliable unless the one, one, if, if that ordinance. If there wasn't ordinance changing the zoning, obviously in that case, um, it would have changed the zoning, but. You know, he, those ordinance would have delineated which property, so it's likely that it hasn't been changed, but yes, we are working on getting to that.
Yeah, but you can't really go to somebody and say, hey, you're out of, you're out of compliance, until you have an accurate map.
And you're, you're always welcome, and any resident is always welcome to submit a formal complaint to the building service department.
Okay.
And they'll investigate it on your behalf, once the, the formal complaint is submitted.
Okay.
So where do they go to do that, Gio?
You can do online, www dot cityofalpine dot com forward slash complaint, or in person at three oh nine West Al Ross Avenue.
Those are neighbors that are very interested in doing that. Okay, so the. Zoning map update is on the way, it's coming, and historic districts. Well, that'll be kind of part of the next workshop. Uh, I. I like the, I mean, of course, the idea that historic districts, but, uh, you might need to actual look at the delineation document. Better start small and expand, rather than try to start all expansive. If there's.
Other than other maps, for example.
Right, yeah, yeah. I think it, it doesn't have to be just one district, for example, I don't see why we can't, doesn't make. The old high school as a historic district doesn't have a whole lot. But it's on right now, not the library part, but the, the, that's a definitely historic building. But, we could use a visual marker there, but I think that definition would be very easy to get. Those are places where we can, where we can start, I know Abby has that, too.
I, I agree, yeah, there are, there's lots of historic districts across the United States that are as small as one block or even a couple of buildings. So, yeah, I, I think that's a great idea to, you know, you're right, we don't have to have, I think the, the issue with the current ordinance is that it's so broad. It covers, if you look at that map, it covers everything, almost. And we always wanna be conscientious about, I mean, right now, since, you know, this is a new thing that we're gonna begin enforcing. We wanna be conscientious about going into residential. Um, you know, and putting, you know, I think if it's a business historic district, or even, you know, where this old high school is. Which was my old junior high, um, that that's, um, that that's important. I think it, I think it's a fantastic idea, Matt, we start, outline the areas that would make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what they have, and this is what I think. That's, this is the whole thing, and this would be the equivalent of what Abby's proposing, and I looked at that, and I'm like.
Good type.
Wow, why, why didn't they just, and not designate what they didn't want, just for us?
Right. And, and, yeah, and I think that's exactly why it's not being enforced right now, I mean, where would just start, and who, yeah, um, so. Part of our workshop next week, we can begin to, we outlined a few districts that make sense. You know, the downtown area, and we can add a few more and take away from, and make those amendments. To the, um, the district, what, I mean, what is our ordinance number, it's eleven dash, hang on.
That's an eleven, that's eleven, that's year old.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm excited to see you all next month, so thank you. This is difficult to do by Zoom, I gotta tell y'all, I do, it is, yeah, it is hard to. To really participate.
But you're here, we've reached here.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Section five, control growth of stores, the different levels of small economy. Yeah.
Who was the sign at that?
That one was. It was Eileen, who's still over here, obviously, who's still over here, Matt, Walter, Abby Branch, and Joy.
Oh, okay. Did I get on that? Didn't know I.
I know.
Yeah. And. And I think what we're doing with the historic ordinance, and, you know, rewriting that, rewriting the sign ordinance, this is all gonna help with that. Another thing that we need to add on the agenda for next month is discussing the current industrial zoning, and what is, what is allowed. And, and really looking at that. And that, I think, also addresses, you know, businesses that could be detrimental to a small, um, city.
You know, when you think about it, last week, we had the one request for a permit, right? Out right here in the area, and that, that to me falls in that category, businesses that we don't build would be.
Factory store.
Yeah, it would be a good thing to have in the run of downtown, or else the owners.
They did. Are they gonna move it or pull?
And it's, they backed out.
They backed out of us, yeah.
Good.
So I don't know what.
So I'll get that added, discuss the current industrial zoning district and what is allowed.
Correct, um, Gio, I have a question. And, and I, and I'm sorry, I, I don't have it by memory, but, um, the, currently on our industrial, how many industrial zoning do we have? Do we have a restricted industrial, or is just general industrial?
If there are abbreviations.
I'm not too sure, um, I think that that would be delineated on the zoning map, which is online.
Okay.
And then, you know, taking the zoning map and looking at what the code of ordinances says, you know, it might be the case where. Hopefully you would explain that.
Even put the map itself, but.
Okay.
So the map has. Let's see. Yeah, it's, it's eventually up and down both railroad roads.
I mean, it may, yeah. But it's just one industrial, it's just one type, it's not restrictive? And I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it right now, but I, planning and zoning map.
I did also, I did also print out for y'all the list of the districts that there were, that I do that as well.
That's what I'm.
Okay.
The one and one industrial district, putting a list of two that, so to me, that, if everything else is listed.
We can revert back to the I B C and we just compare it with the B, that two applications there. I hope that they have.
Gotta be careful, because some of us, they were, we just came down last, I'm sure it's gonna happen. That's what I'm gonna do.
That looks like only.
It's the M one, it's the last thing.
No, going on this thing. Play the bad guy.
We've done that, too.
Yeah. What's thing is detrimental to small towns.
Right, yeah, I mean, you. Different amount of one person might not be down, but it's something else.
And, you know, due to my limited experience, it's all that way, it's. Everything is co-compliant legally, we cannot, you cannot stop them, we could have twenty dollar rentals here.
Yeah, as long as they're going in an area that's so worth it.
So.
Yeah, and you know, all of this item was added, uh, after the ordeal that did happen in October with the replat, and, you know, the city has big changes. Um, residents said that it wasn't transparent, that they didn't get notification of the annexation, we codified that by ordinance, that we would now going forward notify. Surrounding property owners, we added this so that P and Z could brainstorm and let us know how we could legally prevent that. And just basically to provide an opportunity to help us plan, if that's what our citizens want, how are, how are we gonna do it, and how are we gonna do it legally?
Well, and you just said the nail on the head, you gotta make sure you let the surrounding residents, not just like. The last time, and the young lady that works here, it's gonna be in her backyard, basically, she said she knew about it. So as long as we can make the residents, it's not a big theory, we make the residents, now that making, I mean, a fine for it.
And it's really just. That a collective group would be able to come up with a solution if there is.
Right.
Of course, uh, that Death Star building, complicated names, I'm more than sure. Because it's really limited what cities can do, um, again, I mean, we're open to implementing whatever y'all want, I mean, y'all can make your application to the city council if there is a way.
Think we need to go back to, that's something I feel like.
I'm just trying to.
The community around it doesn't want it, as long as they know it's there, it's gotta be put out, they have to have notice, I mean, and, um, what was it, Saddle Fun? Uh, got his liquor license back, you're the only, everybody else's personal running, we're the only residential. And he come give me a notice, you know, that he's gonna do it in case I didn't want that in my backyard. And of course, I'm not gonna go against, it's out of what they're willing to have, but, um, you know. I have trouble parking back there now, but, um, at, at any rate, I knew about it. So I had the option to go and say something, that's just what we want, do the TMBC thing with, give list, so many people around them.
And you have to advertise the paperwork and all of that.
Remember, put it on the radio, make sure they put it on the radio, so that everybody gets the notice, if one person gets it and they don't want it, they're gonna make sure everybody knows about it. I guarantee.
Well, I wanna point out, though, that Gio did follow the law, and that wasn't part of what he was required to do.
No, we had some, yeah, yes, we did, we had it, so it's on there.
Back, uh, you know, we did make it a requirement going forward.
Oh, okay.
By order.
Yes, we did.
And that was specifically annexations, we're not required to send notices when we annex property. I mean, well, if you think about it, two hundred feet from newly annexed property would even be county limits, and, you know what I'm saying, so. We're not required to do that, but based on the feedback, we did make those changes, and this is a thing added again to. Kinda get everybody thinking there's a legal way to stop these things, you know, let us know, and we'll, yeah, keep them.
Thank you, Gio, if you want to.
I'm just trying to gain more insight, something I really wanna concentrate on. Is that member five detrimental, just on our side, from ability? Just from my experience, I'm, I'm not seeing anything that's technically oriented business, and those are kind of in a different practice by itself, but. If there's anything that meets our all codes of ordinance.
We can't stop it.
Doesn't matter what it is, you know, that's shit, I only eat that, and I get this, then remember, yeah, would we want any more. Certain stores here, probably not, but I'm just trying to think of. What we could legally do to stop them.
You get more things for your budget, you get the community involved, and they stop it for you on here. That's what I was like, we discussed the word out, we can't stop it, but the community.
How would the community stop it?
Well, just by making their voice heard.
Well, really, I mean, you did do that.
Maybe the Dollar General, but there was nothing legally that did be done.
Really?
Yeah.
Now, that's, that's why.
I didn't even know it was coming in.
We had, that night, we probably had our residents here speaking.
We had more.
We had like a hundred people, yeah, and then we had to move from here to the medical chamber.
Then they all spoke.
But.
No.
Yeah.
But that's it, Matt.
Well, that's where my biggest concern from the true, true, based on my best experience. From the true legal standpoint, you have a thousand people here, and a thousand people saying, no, they don't want it. If that person brings in all the co-compliant, it legally.
But that's why it's important for the planning and zoning commission to implement, to plan efficiently and see what can be done. To do things out.
To do a historic zone.
Because recently, you know, we did consult our attorney regarding, uh, the industrial site. And they told us that we had every right to deny a reason. Re, replats, we really don't have any discretion, city don't have any discretion, and they have to be approved with any conventional requirements. But when it comes to rezoning, we have complete discretion, it's like essentially the opposite of, you know, we don't, uh, we do have discretion at this time. So I think that just, it, it goes back to why it's so important to plan efficiently, and that's why I'm glad.
Maybe that's why they had the whole thing planned, uh, this store with a board. I mean, think about it, you know what, you. Everything. Could be, you'd say, no, that's for.
I know you're going back from the previous mark, that I like the beside historical elements to that. Would the discount store want to have me meet those historical workbar?
Yeah.
Can we deny?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Gio's saying that.
Okay. If they meet the aesthetic of the historical district. I have experience, but it's a.
That's what anyone put a seven eleven in that empty spot that Catherine owns right next to the Hallen House.
Right now, it's, it's.
And they kept it. Yeah.
And if it's deep in the historical district, but you have to have eighty percent Masonry, twenty percent.
Oh.
Whatever.
Oh.
If.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's.
Yeah, well. And I, and I hope that, and I, I'm, I'm having difficulty kinda understanding a lot of, or just not understanding hearing, but, um. So there, there, we have done, there has been a survey done on all the downtown area, but. If there's, you know, there's two different types of historic districts. Is that what you're asking, so the one that we're doing, that we're, we're recommending for Alpine is a historic ordinance. You know, that would be like restricted, um, that would have building restrictions, and I hate to use that word, but guidelines, guidelines are a better word, building guideline. But those buildings, there's certain buildings in downtown that are, have been approved to be on the national registry. And if we have enough participation in the national registry, those, separate from what planning and zoning in the city of Alpine would do. Those particular buildings can then be, have it be, be an official historic district recognized by the national registry, and can apply for tax grants and that sort of thing. Is that, is that what you asked?
No, 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 we were.
Sorry. Sorry, okay. Yeah, sorry, y'all. So.
But no, it's, it's, uh. It, it's good to, uh, to know that, uh, how they can apply for historic national registry and all that kinda stuff, uh, but, uh. Yeah, I think as far as the district, district goes, uh, the architecture is the main thing, and.
Oh, okay.
Cause it'll still be the own commercial.
Right.
And C one, C two, C one eight, so you meet those requirements, okay, well, then I can do that side.
Fortunately, they probably wouldn't do it because there's no parking.
Right, but, you know, it's, 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 I'm, I'm, to continue what you were saying in regards to the signs, make it better, I'm sure. Nobody wants a seven eleven, like they're, it very well could.
Tell me that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, it's all historic, and, and, yeah, we made it all of all of downtown.
It just.
It just blends.
Because I mean, that's not so bad if you have them blending in, I guess. Um you really need a certain amount of that. I go back to my original, you know, Walmart, it's like their. Motto, build it and then kind of they go and build thirty five year. Populations and build this huge. Super center, literally, hundred eighty five thousand square feet and. You know. Back then, you'd like, you would like those things. And to be honest, I I don't want a Walmart here, you know, I I don't want.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's supposed to, I'm only one of the thinking, I'm thinking, but you know, they're, right now, they're shutting down and that makes me happy. You know, but you could run into a scenario like that, I mean, like a. But I think grocery store, HGV or somebody like that coming out. To be honest, like like the quarters. That, and that's a good example, but they have kind of a monument sign out front. They don't have to be signed. So let's say HGV does come out there. And they buy the quarters and they go in there. Okay. Definitely, because they know you're going into a small community like that, you don't want to go in. It's not very small, but uh they're not gonna shop there. So they reach over, I wouldn't think, do that special. They, they, they're smart enough to have, we need their business.
Just something we had to think about, feelings that no one would, we can't, we can't.
Basically, you get the, like, we have, then the word you get out, if it was, was the third party will say. Like, so it's good to have, it's good to buy the property, but that is something that will. What they wanted. But then the work got out that somebody was had property that was buying for that. Don't want it there, you got no people that don't want it there, they just don't sell. But there's a lot of people that see, people about dollars, you know, we, obviously. Why don't we double the property? They they were willing to sell the property. Yeah.
But don't you think that they, the dollars, you know, people, they have the.
I mean, there's one.
They did.
Oh, they absolutely.
They did anyways, they were. Was everything, you go past it, it become a day.
They threatened to sue us.
Yes, it's busy.
Because our, essentially our attorney told them we weren't gonna issue for a minute.
Gentlemen, who sit there and see.
Anyway.
I gotta analyze or something.
We have a lot of work to our force. No. The folks at your.
Wait, is Abby trying to say something?
No, it's okay. No, it's okay. I can't, I'm, and we're having some, um Gio is working on it. We're having some technical difficulties. With with the audio.
Folks at your.
Okay.